Before we get started, I read the script provided us by the governor's office for remotely held meetings. Good evening, this meeting of the Maynard Select Board is being conducted by Zoom and in person. And speakers on our agenda, some will be participating remotely. And we may allow for public comment as well. The Select Board would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action that is required by the board, the chair or meeting manager will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, we are able within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while the option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, this meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to individual attendees unless otherwise required by law. Reporting, we please be aware that other people may be able to see you, so please take care not to screen share your computer, as anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this evening's meeting are on board docs, with the exception of any executive session materials. And we recommend the members of the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless the chair notes otherwise. We will soon be turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. The chair will down the line of members, writing each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions, please hold it until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. For items with public comment, after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to identify their names and addresses only. Who wants the chair as a list of all public commentators, we will call each by name and afford three minutes per comment. Public comment for public meetings will only be accepted in person per the open meeting law. With that, we will turn to the first item on our agenda, which is public comments. Do we have any public comments in the room with either? Okay?
My name is Christine Valverde and I'm the mayor of Maynard. I am here in just a long time to voice opposition to the Select Board putting out any kind of resolution on behalf of the citizens of Maynard about ceasefires, national politics, international politics. I would like to, and I don't, I'm not going to debate the merits of it, I just like to stay in your lane, be just like the word of Maynard. People want to take on.
Could you, could you, could you do me a favor? Could you change your phraseology tiny bit and sign something other than stay in your lane?
I would like to.
Because I appreciated your email, except the last line that tells us to stay in our lane. This is our lane. So if you can find a different phraseology to discuss it with us, I would appreciate it.
I would like to ask you to, you were elected to be the Select Board of the county of Maynard. You're not senators, you're not congressmen, you don't speak for the old people of Maynard on other topics, you're not endorsing candidates, you're not. And so I'm not, I'm not going to argue with the merits of a resolution, I just like to say that I think it would be best to stay out of international and national politics. It seems like there's plenty of other business of Maynard that needs to take places because the agenda is.
Thank you. Anybody else in public comments?
Yes, sir.
This is it. This is the opportunity right now.
My name is Mike Spinoz, represent the family gallery, I work at every restaurant owner up and down. Yeah, and I truly love Maynard. But I experienced this before when they allowed food trucks and the other pedestrians to come in and pull along the app. Wanted destroyed the local town look. But also the pedal comes in, he can pay us a hundred dollars, he gets a year there. I paid over seven thousand and changed to the city of Maynard. Never mind what I donated twenty and a half years, please fight about the school department. Pay rent, pay taxes, pay utilities. It cost me a lot of money, why stop making a profit? And for them to have a restaurant outside my restaurant, if they own a hundred dollars, they feel very discriminatively, me personally. And to every other restaurant owner. And when I did experience that in Queens, they had two restaurants, moving up the height back in Miami. They did it up and down Mass Ave, two restaurants, drink pool or not, for twenty eight years. And they did eventually allow these food trucks to come in. Put about sixty percent of the local people who work eighty, hundred hours a week, like I've been seven days a week, they got families to support. And their businesses closed down. Eventually, they didn't get rid of the trucks, but also devaluated the property, the landlords didn't collect their rents, they were locked up for quite a long time. And I think it's disturbing to see that happening in Maynard. We donated all our money, all our time to make something successful, and it can be taken away in a blink of an eye, because I can't compete against a guy who doesn't pay rent, doesn't pay electric bill, doesn't pay public utility, doesn't pay high insurance to protect the public that's coming in and the employees that are working. Compensation, and a lot of these people attach businesses, who's to say they are actually paying the meal steps and all those other things? But we have to contend with, and it's just absolutely not fair, because it bothers me to soul, if my wife is soul set over, she is in bed all upset, that was even allowed to happen once. It's like opening a Pandora box, we want to see a line of trucks up the tree, who will devalue the property in there, not just the businesses? And I think that's something you guys should look at, to take serious, because I don't be around. I'd like to be here for the next ten or fifteen years. But if I have to compete, and I have to sell my sandwich to make a small profit at ten or twelve or fifteen dollars, they can sell theirs at four. And not regulated by the board of health, that puts me out of business. And I don't think you want that to happen, I don't think anybody in this room or the town wants it to happen. You know what I'm saying? In fact, create a fair playing field, they want to have the kind of events, have them on special occasions. I said, so there's one out there now, he, he's towed his vehicle, but now he takes up two spaces, part of the
Things like three.
Of three spaces, you know what I'm saying? So if you let one in, you go eleven more. You know, there's, I'm not saying that he was letting intentionally, because I don't know who he is, but you know, mistakes happen, they should be corrected, it's just not fair for them. Everybody that hasn't left one can work so hard, was established, put all their money into it, when I moved to Maynard, my wife fell in love with this guy. I follow up with it now, there was not one person that comes to my store, I see him and I'm smiling, they're smiling. But you can't smile when you're working a hundred and five hours a week. And I'm telling you, this is the truth, I worked seven days a week, I had a witness, we finished the date. I said, I had the state police place an order, a thousand dollars worth of sandwiches. They, I appreciate them, they appreciate us, give them hand, they give us a hand. And that's all I have to say, whatever you can do, look at renting, and I know you guys have kind hearts and understand it's not a regular job, it's not a forty hour job, not a fifty hour job, not a sixty hour job. I got my mother, who's ninety one, depends on me, supportive, have someone take care of her. I have my daughter who's disabled. I have to take care of her, as a single mom, I have mortgages to pay, I have bills to pay. Then if that went down, it cripples my whole family. And it's you wouldn't want it to happen to any of your people, or anybody else here in this family, or any other business owner in this family. You know what I'm saying? And I apologize, I've taken so much time, but that's all I wanted to let you guys know, I don't know if I should stay any longer to listen to anything else, but I hope you can listen to my heart, because I mean what I say, because I could break down a kid, when I think of my family. I have been struggling, one of my children was very sick with, you know, permanently disabled. And you all know it, you all probably come to the store, you look at it, she looks beautiful on the outside, but she's only programmed to live to forty years old, and I'm stuck with your daughter. And then she could die at any moment, and my, my thing is that I did this because then, but now all of a sudden, things have changed. And, you know, if I know that is going to continue that, that means I have to get up and move out in some day. That I don't want to do, because I really love it. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Any other public comments in the room? Yes, sir.
I'm not going to go on, but can you say your name? Michael Wonnigan, work at the Family Del. Also, we're about twenty five, or What Mike said was also is to my understanding, food trucks can out there during the week, about twenty, thirty, and five. And you start going in front of the coyotes, I always saw that inside, you know, we told that comes to my attention, they're watching his living as a new forty eight. And then I find out that that truck and I left to be four, five hundred, maybe even six hundred bucks, that's going the other way. And we're still trying to pay the lines a lot. And all together, we're trying to back him up. Anyways, whatever you can do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay?
Hi everyone, my name is Almond, I'm from Mexico, and I'm trying to survive. It's probably even on the food truck. I guess they and I don't understand why, we have a lot of restaurants. And and I would feel it's bad because it's kind of been our restaurants, we pay a lot of taxes, so. There's so many people in the void here. And just coming to trust and pay. Even if they pay two hundred. But I feel like if we want Maynard to survive in the restaurants, we need to think about what they don't should be coming to make business. We are in there, we're into the fighting. They're all no only to benefit to very many people, so being free to work. And I really feel that it's no fair. I have to be be the food truck to be the next restaurant, we are not we're being real though, because maybe that's possible. So this thing about that makes me feel like, okay, if you come in, tell them who's next week or next month, maybe next year. Are you pointing to the restaurants here, or you already have this? Every field, every and I don't think Maynard needs to get another food truck, to make a restaurant in Mexico. So that's my, I mean, there's no fair.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We can't talk anymore.
Any other public comment in the room? Anyone else in the room has any comments? On any topic? This will be the chance. Okay. Craig, can you?
There is somebody online.
One online, Betsy, that's what I believe it says. Hello? Betsy, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. I wanted to make a public comment.
This is the turn.
Okay, yep, I've been waiting. Thanks. Hi, my name's Betsy Gardstein, I live at thirty three Concord Street. And I am speaking out in support of the resolution for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. I disagree strongly with, I forgot the woman's name, the woman who spoke first. I think this is very much in quote unquote the lane for any public official or private, that is, to speak out about this. It, part of the part of the problem with with the Holocaust was that a lot of people didn't speak out. And speaking out and becoming, adjoining the number of towns in Massachusetts who have already passed similar resolutions. It really puts pressure on people who have, you know, that, more of that, you know, typical responsibility, you know, in government, senators, other congressmen. It's very important that we apply pressure, because it's really all we can do, and it's our tax dollars that are going to fund what is, what's happening, and Israel could not be inflicting this genocide without the direct financial and weapons support from the United States, that is really clear. And I want to just point out that the very first part of the resolution specifically says, whereas the town of Maynard Select Board condemns all forms of antisemitism, Islamophobia, racism, and bigotry in Maynard, and we welcome people from all backgrounds and beliefs in our town. I don't know how anyone could not support that and agree with that statement. And I speak as an anti-Zionist Jew, and this tragedy affects me incredibly so, because this is happening and it's not in my name, you know, but I, it's, so it's a very difficult emotional situation. And I think that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. The town can support this resolution and go about the business of, you know, fixing potholes and talking about roosters that are too noisy for certain neighbors, I don't know about that, I wasn't there last night, but my point is that I, you know, I really disagree with the notion that, oh, we can't really, we shouldn't be passing or even discussing this because local officials have no say in any of the policies and it's, you know, quote unquote, out of their lane. Highly disagree with that. I think that, you know, now we're up to thirty five thousand deaths. The time this resolution was written, it was thirty thousand. And sixty nine percent of those deaths are women and children. So think about the size of Maynard, or what, about eleven thousand people? And you double that, and that's, you know, we're getting close to how many women and children have been killed. And if you're just talking about kids, it's well over fifteen thousand. That's bigger than our town, so I just want people to think about that. And that's all I have to say, and I, I hope that whenever there is a vote, that the board votes in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there's another one, Doreen?
Hi, yeah, I don't know if you read, I, I sent a letter to the board, I don't know if you read that letter off, or I missed the part admitting, what?
Could you, could you tell us your name and address, please?
My name is Doreen Grossman, and I live at Deer Path, at Deer Path in Maynard. And I
Yeah, we have, we have your email letter under our correspondence items this evening.
Okay, did you read that aloud during the meeting? I missed the first half of the meeting.
No, we did not read it, we did not read it aloud, the correspondence typically go to the board, and the board members read them, consider them, and then we, we act on, act appropriately.
Okay, well, I just want, I'll speak out publicly that I oppose you writing a ceasefire regulation, resolution, because what the town of Maynard does, it's not going to affect what Israel does, Israel is going to do what they're going to do. You're not going to influence them in any way, our tax dollars that we pay here in Maynard are not going towards Israel. That's our federal dollars that are doing that, and the time spent on this should be better spent on doing things in Maynard that need to be fixed. To talk about genocide, there is no genocide going on, the genocide is a deliberate attempt to kill off members of a group. That is not Israel's intention, Israel's intention is to root out Hamas and get rid of them, because Hamas has vowed to do this to Israel again and again, what they did on October seventh. They're, in their charter, if you read it, it says that their mission is to totally destroy Israel and to kill Jews in Israel and around the world. So we are all at risk, Hamas is a terrorist group, it's been listed so by US and other countries, it is not no humanitarian organization. And they have put their citizens in harm ways only, the reason for doing this is to delegitimize Israel and to demonize Israel, so that they look bad. Look, to say, oh, look, how many civilians have been killed, and the numbers that they're quoting are not accurate. How are they, you know, getting people knowing exactly how many people are being killed? You know, there's a lot of rubble there, and that's been disputed by the UN recently, they have the numbers, it is a shame when anybody is killed in war, but it is war. And Israel, it always seems to be the only country that singled out for anything it does. Israel has a right to defend itself and its citizens, so I do not think that the board should be making any kind of decision about this. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Gigi, you missed the beginning, you have any, you want any comments, Gigi? Because I know you weren't here, so I'm doing the comments in the room now, so if there's any other comments in the room, and I know you came after we started, so if you have comments you'd like to make, please feel free. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else online?
At the end of our Gigi, and I'm concerned about the people. I think I emailed this morning to raise my concern on the kind of food truck, the platform, the restaurant. I am support of small local business, I am a small local business. However, I think that people in the office that are from the state and seeing where we at is a lot of business too, and we have to share a lot of public comments. And now they're taking over a little tree for a little spark. Not only that, the voting that they're using are very loud. So I don't think it's appropriate for my customers, because they go, lots of them involve, and they scare. So last night, they were like, I mean, that's why everybody has a concern with me, but they said so I don't expect them to come back this way. And then they called me and they said, first of all, they didn't call the public, second, they, you know, the voting to have on their scale. I mean, I've seen the Maynard business for nine years, and a lot of people have been knowing me, so I did. I hope that you guys think I'm not a politician for the people. That's why we in house go to Congress, that's why you make it, and you move that that whole food stuff, do that out there and see how all the business, yeah.
Okay.
Really paying.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a comment, but I don't know how to raise my hand.
Okay, who's this?
Robin Schulman, Third Street, Maynard.
Okay.
My first comment is, when someone speaks standing at that place where that woman just was, I, we can't hear it on Zoom, it's all jumbled up.
Okay.
And the only other thing I'd like to say is I do support the ceasefire resolution, and I'd be happy to talk with anyone who has concerns about it. Search for what the truth is of what is or isn't happening over there, and hopefully we can all find common ground to do our part to stop needless killing. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room? Will we move on to other topics? No? All right, item number four on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda, would anybody like to make a motion?
I will move to approve consent agenda items, A, your D has presented contingent upon appearance to all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidance authorizing use of digital signatures to be approved.
Okay. Okay, the conversation about these four items. Flag Day. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you.
For, for those that are in the audience that may be here for their particular item. The four of them are the annual Flag Day for Elks, the Maynard Library Annual Concert for the dates that are for July twentieth, and the use of town property by the Maynard Community Band for evenings, June twenty ninth and August thirtieth, as well as the Town Charter Amendment Certification, so anybody, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking loud enough, I don't, I don't want to sound like I'm yelling. The use, the, I wanted to make sure that anybody who's here for these items knew that their item has been addressed. And they are, the, the items on the consent agenda are the use of town property at the Elks for the annual Flag Day ceremony on June fourteenth. The use of town property for the Maynard Free Annual Concert, the library free concert on Memorial Park, which is scheduled for July twentieth. The use of town property for the Maynard Community Band at Memorial Park on Wednesday evenings, June twenty ninth through August thirtieth. And then there's a Town Charter Amendment Certification, the board has to routinely approve, that is also included, so if you're part of that, your item is being addressed and theoretically approved by the board in just a second, so that you are aware, and if you want to depart, you can, if you want to stay, please, we welcome you.
You're welcome to stay all night. So the consent agenda is typically repeat business, annual, annual events that we've already approved in the past, they just come up for approval. If anybody here has a question for anyone in the room that's part of any of these three items, we'll, we'll ask, but typically you guys don't need to participate, we'll just usually, you know, we have seen these before, we know what they are, you know, Flag Day, the free concert, and the community band stuff, that's old business to us, we just kind of go through this process, so we've approved it again for twenty twenty four, so there's really not much participation unless you're going to do something crazy we need to know about. But does anybody in the board have any comments or questions about these four items?
I actually want to say I want to thank Jean for coordinating with Max's Art Shop and Fine Arts in choosing the day that works better for them. Because I really appreciate you working with them to do that, let us do it, and we appreciate their thanks of great work and support.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda this evening? Thank you, guys, good luck with your events, if there's anything else we can do for you, let us know.
We also
Try and pressure us. What, what day of the week is the fourteenth this year? Okay, all right, thank you very much, good luck.
Yep, so we have, there's we also have a motion to move to approve a use of community events account towards the town's personnel costs in support of the Flag Day event on June fourteenth, twenty twenty four. That.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so what are we doing with that, that, Rick?
No, it's just that sometimes applicants will ask for additional support, so when the application say, are there other resources you may need in this particular place, the Flag Day applicant, apparently?
Yeah.
They've asked for some additional support, and I think public works said that that will probably require overtime, which is fine, and we can afford it to speak, and then in that particular account, and I just, it's afford it to speak and then in that particular account, and I just uh, it's very, it's very safe to top of this.
Okay.
And and the board, I I'm I'm confident that you can do this maybe.
All right. Anybody have any?
There was not a second, I don't think.
Second. But it was that on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's, yeah, yeah, you, yeah. Flag item, no, go up, yeah. Up, 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 up the A. Yeah.
Yeah, I see that, but I I mean the specific use, oh, it's within it.
Yeah, you click on it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Got it. Okay.
All right. Um, all right, so all those in favor of the move to approve the use of community events fund for flag day events? All right. Thank you. Can you just let them know we approved that, Greg, because they're they're gone and they might not know.
Yeah.
All right, um. So now we will um. We'd like to reopen the public hearing in regards to the um, alcohol license transfer of Maynard Liquors eighty six Powder Mill Road. Are we ready for that?
Yeah, I think so. I think we're joined by attorney quarter.
Okay.
And so it just says a little bit of um, background to remind the board in public. Um, this is the second time uh, this went through that and it's found and it's represented by um, attorney quarter. And it's for um, the transfer of the liquor license that is down on on the power of the road. Um, this is is new owner under, you mentioned one on it. And so this is a continuance from the last meeting. Last meeting, there was a little bit of a mix up, a little bit of confusion. Um, because it's not just the transfer, the applicant is also seeking the board's endorsement of uh, pledging collateral and pledging inventory. Um, according to uh, the attorney, again, the attorney board, um, that's that is uh not not to be alarming, it's it's kind of standard in the industry these days. Um, but the board did attend my request to get backup from town. So we asked that council and it's a little bit of back and forth between that council and attorney board, and in my opinion, it all seems to be fine. It all seems to be on the way. Um, one note is that the um, the actual um transfer of the pledge and the promises, those are signed after the final applications for the five days. See, that that doesn't sound alarming to myself. There that's that, I mean, I my understanding would be that the business is fully transferred once the alcohol is deleted, the business is relying on it. Um. Anyway, so that's a little bit of that, but I'm sure the board has questions uh, attorney board.
No, I think that was the only question, right, was that that language? And we believe that language has been resolved. Nope, we believe, is that?
Okay, yes, yes, I do.
I'm asking, I'm I'm just making sure that we
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Including you, agree that that language issue has been resolved, and now we can move forward with the two motions.
A lot of the on this is on China, so if the ABCC doesn't agree, then.
Okay, so um. As this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the room would like to comment on the um proposed um, transfer of the license at eighty six Powder Mill Road? Hey, I would ask if there was any questions online, but we're not allowed to because it's public hearing, and you have to be in the room. So. If someone would like to make them two motions, there's two motions to be made, we'll make them all in a row.
I'll move to approve the section fifteen package store, all alcoholic beverages license transfer application opposed of the pledge of collateral, pledge of inventory for the Maynard Liquors Inc. at eighty six Powder Mill Road. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Um, any further conversation in the room? And all those in favor? Oh, yeah, roll call vote. Um, Jeff?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I'm a yes, so that.
And then I will move to authorize the Town Administrator's Office to distribute the section fifteen package store all alcoholic beverages licensed for Maynard Liquors Inc. At eighty six Powder Mill Road upon approval from the Alcoholic Beverages Control Permission, AKA the ABCC, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
And again, any comments in the room? Any comments on the board? Roll call vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we're good. Thank you.
All right. You got it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
All right, it is now
Thank you, sir.
Seven fifty nine, would anybody like to make a motion? It's close to public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing at seven fifty nine.
All second, anyone on second? All right, all in favor? Yeah, no, I'm gonna need to roll call that, dude. Please, it's so fun. Jeff?
Yes.
Justin, David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so we're out of that public hearing.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a um, Eagle Scout project from Ronan Rafter. I was gonna guess you were Ronan.
Yeah.
So uniform guys. All right, Ronan, um, welcome. Um, let me see what, if there's a motion here. Okay, you have a motion. Okay, um, well, why don't you tell us what you want to do and how you want to do it and how we can help, and then we'll get to the motion and hopefully move on.
So I'm here to get approval to off the end of part of the commission before I go to boys scout committee and there I will, the rail trail here in town for, I actually have uh, some handouts.
Absolutely, yes. You just, all right, yeah, yeah, we, yeah, so here, Mike, I I have it on, I have it, I have an athletic package. Pretty, all right. Okay.
Because uh, the rail trail pollinator projects. Um. My heart is bolder than trail flowers and the twonetis of the big park. Who's actually done work for the town, I mean, there's other projects similar to this volunteer work in the past. Um. So, but the uh, we could have looked at the project, the plants, the fifteen twenty or so uh, pollinator friendly plants, like uh, you can watch their butternums and other type within the rail trail area behind the garage. I am, I came here to approve all for it. When the six feet from the trail, which will allow for the captain of the rail trail to do with their law, with their mowing and such. It will be bowl maintenance, obviously, plants to uh go own and every year two or so, two times a week, I will water them for, until they are properly be frozen uh, one, uh, I would think either on June, June eighth or the ninth for the fifteen sixteen. Open for at least ten volunteers minimum, a mixture between scouts and adults at about twenty. This is, we're hoping to complete this in about two, three hour sessions, probably two days.
Okay, um, if you're looking for volunteers, you may want to seek out the Maynard Tree, Tree, Tree Community Club.
And or the garden club.
The garden club, yeah.
Well, and I also think you'll 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 get a lot of your uh, your scout volunteers.
Yes, that's where I'm primarily hoping to get uh, most of them.
Yeah.
All right. Um. Okay, anybody have any um, questions, comments for Ronan?
Uh, I just, Ronan, this is wonderful. Thank you very much for coming into this project. I'm a big fan of the rail trail. I use it a lot. And so this is something that I will, of course, see most day, maybe then. Thank you for your effort and you come to the panel.
Absolutely. Um, so would anybody else have any comments for Ronan? Or would anybody like to make a motion?
I will move to approve proposed Eagle Scout project from Scout Rowan Rafter for plantings and landscaping on town property along the aspect of the rail show as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you for coming in and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
It's gotta go to another committee.
Oh, good, yeah, yeah.
You guys take these back just in case you needed somebody else saving paper. One, thank you.
We we have it all electronic.
Good luck with your Eagle Scout. And you are installed.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, we have uh, two appointments. That's me rough, I'm kidding. All right, um. Let's, we have two appointments to make tonight. Would anybody like to make a motion on the first? Which is to approve the appointing of Mark Koenig to the senior center committee.
Move to approve Mark Koenig to the senior center committee with twenty twenty six, authorizing use of digital signatures.
Second.
And he, um, he's not here right now. Any conversation, questions, concerns, comments?
Have you, have you had? Have you met him?
I have met him. I haven't seen at that committee, but I have met him, yes. I'm, I'm talking about this, but I haven't.
And there's other shifting sub committees around earlier in the committee, or, yeah.
Never ending moving task, those committees. Cherry sees to that, Cherry's keeping us all on its own. Um.
No, he doesn't went anywhere, anyone close.
Or reader, the non-town ones, and I like a certain number of community members I'm fine with. I don't necessarily need a full man thing.
Yeah.
The non-town supporters.
Yeah. So anyways, um, all those in favor of Mark joining the senior center committee? All right, so you'll, yes, someone will get in touch with him, like one of the grays.
Yeah.
All right, um, now we have a appointment for Wade Chris Reese to the cultural council. We'll wait to make a motion.
Move to approve Wade Chris Reese to the cultural council with the term expiring June thirtieth twenty twenty six, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Is Mr. Chris here?
I would uh, be remiss if I didn't comment that Mr. Reese, not only is he my neighbor, but on top of that, he is our newest um, library trustee as a result of last week's election. So I would congratulate him on his willingness to serve, not only, and I said this to him last night, he is now a uh Mr. Trustee, as well as he will now be Mr. Commissioner.
All right.
And I I do have to ask one, so there's no conflict at all, right, between library and cultural council and farmers, like you 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 do a lot, which is great, but I'm just wondering.
The only difference of that would be, you know, if um, the farmer's department benefits from these experiences. Work for you, but something that, yeah.
All right. Um, any other questions, concerns? All those in favor? Mike, another job. Thank you very much for volunteering. We appreciate it very much.
And don't get gets one.
I guess one in. Gotta get some improvement. Not tonight, you gotta, you gotta want before the first meeting, that you participate actively. You'll just need to uh, just come in to town clerk this way, you're in two seconds. Thank you. Um, number eight. Community electricity aggregation program that's been removed from the agenda. We now get into contracts and the first contract is that of planning director, Bill Nimser, let's see him here. No, um, you can speak to the contract. I didn't, I just, he's not yet. Usually he is, but he's not. So go ahead.
Oh, so um, so this is the contact for our planning director. What was the reason for the delay on the last one? Oh, did, yeah, I, uh, me, I just, yeah, I saw I've been in touch with Saddle. Uh, and they wanted to do a couple more. Uh. Couple more actions that I, I'm not, I can't remember exactly, but they wanted to be more prepared before the board started the official thirty day period. So uh, I got enough, like, that was it. Thanks.
Yeah, she wanted us to initiate the thirty day period tonight, but she wasn't ready. Yeah.
So Mr. Care, uh, so, yeah, Mr. Nimser has been with time for ten years. Um, this is a three year contract, it's a little late, it's uh, this, this this contract is started July first twenty twenty. These things do sometimes take some time. Um. And uh, you know, uh, amicable negotiations between self, myself, um, with the support of Assistant Administrator Duggan and looking at sort of um. Marvel duties and positions and experience in that position, I believe Mr. Nimser has more than even his worth of value to the town. Especially as indicative last night, the success we had from um pretty heavy actions, and I think the sort, the M B T A communities, um, the A U's uh, gun ranges, eh, but that's, that's only just sort of the typodizer. Bill has been instrumental in the long term, long range progress and prosperity of town. And in terms of planning board and select board in town. Hands up. Any word of kids, um, Bill is a great advisor. Fantastic member of team.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any um, public comments to make in regards to this contract that we discussed earlier in executive session this evening? Did anybody like to make a motion in regards to Mr. Nimser's upcoming contract?
I'll move to approve personnel employment agreement, but Bill Nimser is planning director effective July first twenty twenty three, remained in full force effect until June thirtieth twenty twenty six as presented.
Second. Okay, um. Comments?
Well, just reiterate what the town administrator just said, I think we, in particular, the outcomes that we saw from town meeting last night around the M B P Community Act, where we saw a lot of uh, consternation in other communities, that we were able to have a thoughtful plan and discussion last night. The firearms represented a lot of great work uh, with stakeholders and advanced to town meeting, the A D U's is something that that I think has been uh, underutilized, been plenty and update to that um, by law as well, and many other things, so. A lot of debt beyond just the tip of the iceberg on on those uh, actions that we saw last night, in addition to other things from the past three years for the plan.
Okay, um, all right, um. Anything else from the board? Wouldn't echo Jeff's sentiments and comments about Bill? All right, all those in favor of Bill's contract?
Thank you.
Anyone opposed? No. Okay, thanks, Greg, for your work on that.
Sorry. Yes, yeah.
We are the sign.
Oh.
Yeah. We're efficient.
Um, yeah. Okay, all right, um, EPA three nineteen grant application, Greg, you want to just give us the quick?
I'll do it the best I can, but this is, uh, if nothing else, in a point of introduction to um, Sarah Nowen. Um, so Sarah has been, which is part of the E P, and they have been um, partnered with the town in regards to storm water management, and a couple other um, structural project, particularly storm management. So this is EPA grants, it is from a federal level, but um, it is, it is going to be, I think, critical for the town's long term storm water management approach. The specifics after that, I'm not so great of, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that Sarah.
Sure. Um, hi, everyone. Yeah, I'm Sarah Alvin. You've seen me before. I'm um a V H B and the town's uh, stormwater M S four consultant. Um, so just to be clear, the form that we need you to sign tonight is purely a form that um, it basically authorizes Greg to Greg and um, if we put Justin's name down. Um, Justin, uh, the D P W director to be able to sign a contract, but we are only applying for the grant right now. We aren't signing any contract. It's just for some reason the the grant application includes this form. They want to make sure that we have the right people on board, ready to sign a contract if we are awarded the grant. So that's all we're asking for tonight is just signature on a form, um, authorizing the town administrator and the D P W director to be able to sign a contract. Um. But just really big picture on what this grant application is, um. We, you you've heard me talk before about a potential storm water utility for the town of Maynard. Um, and we've been looking at this grant opportunity, the EPA three nineteen grant for a while. Um, and we were actually planning to apply next. Next fiscal year, um, and talk about potentially getting a match, um. Because it normally requires a forty percent match, um, but this amazing opportunity came up where just this year, um. Basically EPA was able to raise the funds from with federal dollars for to waive the match, to waive the forty percent match. So we scrambled to apply this year, um, because obviously that match is a big hurdle to applying to this kind of grant. Um, so we are applying for a grant to, um. Investigate the feasibility of implementing a stormwater utility in Maynard. Um, and so this, this. If we were awarded the grant, this project would allow us to figure out how much we would charge people, um, how, you know, how much we'd have to raise. Um, the billing structure, the administrative program, all those kinds of things. Um. And yeah, so that's what this grant is about. We're crossing our fingers that we're gonna get it. It's due this Friday. Um, it's pretty much all buttoned up at this point, other than this form and a couple other, you know. Ts that need to be crossed and I's that need to be dotted. Um, but yeah, that's the, that's the scoop.
Okay. Anybody have any questions hearing here now? I mean, Sarah's.
You know, Sarah, I think we're, we're all familiar from your previous presentation, but we have a lot of people on here who were not. Can you just give us the three sentence background on, on what the utility would seek to have us comply with?
Sure. So, um, a stormwater, the basic concept of a stormwater utility is, um. Or it's a stormwater enterprise fund that we'd be setting up, which would essentially be. A separate pot of money, um, dedicated solely to, um. Maynard stormwater program. Um, right now there's a lot of deferred maintenance, a lot of. Um, struggle to comply with stormwater permits, um, because the stormwater program competes with. Uh, everything else that needs funding from the general fund. Um, and. Like water and sewer, you know, stormwater is actually a. Taking stormwater off of people's properties, um, when those properties have impervious cover, um, that's a service that the town provides, um. At least that's how this is, you know, viewed under a stormwater utility. Um, and so essentially it would be, we'd be. Kind of creating a, a fee to charge, um, property owners based on the amount of impervious cover they have on their property. Um. And that fee would basically create the revenue that would go into this stormwater enterprise fund. And we'd be able to deal with the neglected maintenance and the, um. M S four permit compliance and, um, pay for a lot of other things that are currently paid for under the general fund, but could be paid for under this fund like street sweeping. Um. Yeah, things like that.
Okay, uh, for anybody that's interested, um, in what we're talking about and what Sarah is talking about, um. M S four is something that the town has been looking at and working towards. Um, for several years and there is volumes of information out, out there on M S four and what it. What it means and what we're required to do per the, um. Regulations. So it's, there's a background to it out there. If anybody is interested in, um, looking and, and more information, then it's. Kind of sort of beyond the, um. Scope of what we typically do and it's something that our D P W director is very familiar with. And if you want to get in touch with Justin DeMarco, he can help you understand it as well. And that's M S four. Anybody like to make a motion in regards to the M S four, uh, three nineteen EPA grants?
Move to authorize the town administrator and his designate, including the director of public works. To submit the application for the section three nineteen EPA plant. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved. Second.
Any other conversation, questions, concerns about this? Grants. All those in favor? Okay.
So you'll get that. Begging tonight.
Wonderful. Tomorrow's totally fine. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Green Meadows School Building Committee update, um. Voted, um, to submit some detailed plans on Monday, yesterday. On a call, it was a, um. Absent one member of the committee, it was a unanimous decision to do so. And that will go to M S B A immediately and they will come back to us if they have any, um, comment.
One member, you mean one member.
One, one member voted no. It's one. Yeah, one member voted. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, but.
The thing's important to note that the member who voted no did so because he felt that he had not had enough time to properly review the materials and he needed to, he felt the need to be rigorous. And felt that, uh, he couldn't, uh, fairly pass his vote without, um, demonstrating and, and actually. Giving the, the material.
Yep. Correct. So other than that, they're moving ahead with certain, um. Certain, you know, testings and borings and grills and, um. Other types of things and, you know, continuing the background to develop the, um, final plans. Um, that's that. Update the senior center. Uh, we haven't met in a little while. We're meeting again, I believe. I think we meet Thursday night, the twenty second. The twenty third, um, if not, we'll be meeting the next week, but I believe we meet this week. Um, right? Yeah, I don't think they did. I, I, I was unaware that I never, I never got into gender and update on it. So I didn't, I didn't go. So all right. I will, uh, get in touch with Jerry and get an update because I was unaware that I missed a meeting. No one ever sent me anything saying. All right, um, so correspondence, um.
Didn't you know they approved the whole thing?
When did you like to see the plant?
Listen, listen, trust me, they, they, they might. It might try. Um, so we have, uh, multitude of correspondence this evening. Would anybody like to make a motion in regards to these correspondence?
I will. Move to accept. Correspondences A through K as presented.
Okay. Um, any, anybody have any comments or questions about these correspondence?
I would just like to thank those people who did, uh, correspond. Uh, this is obviously a, an important issue to many people with many points of view. And for us to, uh, receive them, I think is very helpful to get a sense of, of. You know, how people throughout the town feel. So I would welcome more people to. Uh, to submit comments on this subject and others, because that's how we can find out, engage public opinion on, on, on these kinds of issues. So thank you.
Believe the comments, I believe the topic that's speaking of is the Palestine ceasefire resolution suggestion. That there's several, um. Correspondences received. In favor, several against, and then there was a couple of, um, correspondence about a, a D P U permit or request for comments, um. The minute golf course equals twenty twenty four report. And then, um. So the, your email did not make it because we got it late today, but we'll go into our next correspondence. So you'll see it in, in, as part of the public record. Um, but that will, that will, we will add that as well. Um, but anyway, so, um, does anybody have any other comments about these items that will just accepting the correspondence into the record? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'm sorry, did I?
Been made and seconded? Okay, um, all in favor? All right. So. We have some minutes. To approve. You want to make a motion on the minutes?
I'll move to accept and approve meeting minutes of April sixteen point twenty four, as shown not residence and digital signatures if approved.
Second. All right, um. Any discussion on it's all the favorite. Okay. Um, next up is the Israel Palestine resolution conversation. Um, we've been asked by. Several community members to support a resolution. In favor of a ceasefire in Palestine. And we've also been asked, um, by several members of the community to not. Support a resolution in support of a ceasefire in Palestine. Um. So. I don't know what the, um, flavor of the board is. I think that we all understand what's going on there. I think we all have our own opinions about it. And I think that, um. That's, that's. Obviously, you know, intelligent adults are paying attention to the things around the world, especially this topic. But I, for one. Agree with several people that have contacted us that this is something that is outside the purview of the Maynard select board. But I am only one of five people. So if anybody else has another opinion or would like to make a motion to do something different. Um, you're, you're welcome to do so, but I am, uh. Not against the ceasefire in particular, but I'm just not. In the opinion that this is something that's within our purview. I've read the Maynard town charter several times about our roles and responsibilities. And I think this goes beyond our responsibilities and roles as, um, the select board, I think as an individual. And as individuals, each of us can make our own statements to our, um, state delegation, our federal delegation and or. Um, anybody else in the position to cause an effect at a, at a higher level. That's my opinion. Um, if anybody else, anybody else want to share their opinion, just in?
Um, I, I. Agree, I, I agree, Chris. Um, I think that this has been, it's a hard topic, uh, to. To sit and listen, um, and try to respect. All of the input that we have gotten, um, because it is all important and, uh. And I, as a, as an individual, do understand that. Um, that this is an important topic, but I agree that. This is not a. This is not the forum for, or this is my, my words, but this is not. What the select for. Should be taking a stand on. We have taken, we have made public statements in the past regarding, um. Anti Asian violence. We have made public statements about. Believe racism. And there might be one other one.
Let me tell you something.
And it's, and those were. Those were statements. Regarding things or regarding incidents or, or trying to detect. The residents that are here in Maynard that we serve. And I, I have struggled with this. I have been thinking about this for the past. Four weeks or five weeks since it's been, since it's come up. Um, but I really just don't see. That I'm, I am not in favor of making a statement regarding this.
I would, I would agree, and I think that there is a concern from my perspective about precedent setting. That this board would suddenly be, um, approached by any number of possible issues. National, international, uh, et cetera. Um, that would just become too much. Uh, you know, where does it end on requests from our board of five people hired. By the residents of Maynard, or I should say voted, elected by the, uh. Residents of Maynard to, uh, run the town's business. And. You know, I'm, I'm not an expert in international affairs, nor am I, uh. A, uh. National defense expert, nor am I, um. You know. A. An international politician. Um. I don't even consider myself a local politician, so, uh. So. I just don't think it falls in, um, into the roles as described of the select board. Um, in the town.
I actually think that the board. Does have a responsibility to respond to, um, articles of this nature. Um, despite the fact that they might seem way beyond the scope of what we normally deal with. Um, this resolution proposed by Maynard for Palestine calls for very specific actions by the U S government. So what I try to do is to establish, well, what kind of cri- criteria are needed? For the select board to vote on a resolution of this nature. So regardless of its merits, the resolution or any resolution must surely carry the weight of broad. General strong majority support by the citizens of the town in order for it to be a truly authentic state. Representing the town. And it would be wrong to claim to represent the voice of the town when in fact the opinions are very divided. As evidenced by the communications that have been received by us on board. Uh, it's not unreasonable to imagine that a select board either for or against this resolution could result in ironically. Greater divisiveness within the town and interfere with the issues and questions of daily concern to us. So I ask the question, um. Uh, is, has the criteria been met in this case, um, by the, by this group? And I would say no. So despite my reluctance to support a vote on this ceasefire resolution, I do applaud the group. And others for their concern about the horrors that are taking place and the desire to find some way to affect change. And limit the suffering on all sides. Uh. I also go to thinking about, well, what can we do as a community? And this is where I think the board maybe can provide some leadership. Uh, we can help foster a climate in which people can exercise their rights to freedom of expression, which is important, of course. Um, within the official town structure, for example, there's the human relations committee, which is currently dormant. Um, but which has dealt with, uh, issues in the past, for example, the anti Asian, uh, violence, so the anti. No violence towards Asians. I want to make sure I state that right. Yes. Um. I was greatly encouraged to witness people carrying both Palestinian and Israeli flags, engaging in conversations with each other on the giant, the triangle in downtown Maynard, sharing muffins. Um, I doubt if many of us are naive, naive enough to believe that one kumbaya moment is sufficient to satisfy the need for a resolution in the Middle East conflict. We do need to guard against those who seek to be divisive and offensive, and unfortunately, um. That has happened a little bit. Um. But as with previous statements against hate and racism, the work of fighting bigotry and hatred must be carried out by the community at large. Um, so we have a challenge. Uh, absent the immediate threats of violence that other parts of the world see, not just the, uh, the Middle East, of course. Um. We should be in a good place to practice the very attributes of peaceful conflict resolution. That we so keenly want to see among the leaders of people around the world. And that challenge is before all of us. Uh, even as we go about our lives in May. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I thought it was interesting, the number of letters I received that focused less on the issues at hand and more on whether or not. Uh, we talked about already just a bit, whether or not the select board should respond, um. And I, I do think that the select board, if they so choose, can and should use its voice when it wants to, and it's. Hard to put a black and white line around when that should or should not be. And so while I'm sympathetic to the slippery slope argument, um, I, I think if there's particular. Issues of morality that, that we're aligned on and feel we have some representation. From the town on. We should feel that we can use our voice, whether that's on a state matter, um, an international matter, um. But the criteria are never going to be clearly definable. Uh, the, the kind of secondary comment I saw on, on these emails was that the issue is too complex and that one I reject that. And I think we're all. All of us in this town participants in a democracy, we're expected to make votes and decisions on leaders at the federal level, at the state level, at the municipality level. On very complex issues and, and educating ourselves as part of that process. So while I, I am sympathetic to. What is the mission select board and whether that creeps beyond it or itself into the community, um, I think we all should be paying attention to complex topics, especially when there are deep moral value to it. Moving on, focusing on some of the, um. Emails encouraging us not. To support a ceasefire, um. Certainly acknowledging the horrific attacks on October seventh by Hamas, uh, including rape and killing, um. They continue holding a. Uh, including rape and killing, um, they're continuing holding hostages uh by Hamas in Israel. And the need for Israel to lose the ability of Hamas to commit those acts again. Balance on the other side by people who want to have a mayor select for support a ceasefire resolution. Really pointing out the failure of the idea to adequately protect civilian life in its campaign against Hamas. And the prevention of the proper arrival of humanitarian aid, food, gas, medicine. Into the territory that they can fully access and entrances to, and the prevention of free journalism. Uh, in the war zone, um aligned to practices that even the American government uh allowed during the war on terror. And it was interesting because I didn't necessarily see that those goals were in complete conflict with each other. It was that there are. Challenges on both sides that are completely asymmetrical. Um, and when I then take a look at what other individuals who are staying around the country, one thing that was particularly interesting to me was the. Reading from a series of university administrators, some who've spoken for Congress and, and are feeling protests and divisions on campus. One of whom had some to the effect where he said that it doesn't matter what I say. I'm going to be, when I'm fluent, I'm going to be safe and happy of this no matter what, um, and that felt way to be upon me. That even saying something, even trying to come to a consensus is, is going to be the target on you no matter what. Um, but I, I just don't feel we should allow that to prevent us from speaking out when we see a moral issue. I think that is very clear. Couple other things I, I just want to point out that I think can get lost in this thread, um. The government of Israel and the populace of Israel are differing opinions in many cases, uh. Not to mention Hamas and the Palestinian population. Uh, but in particular, where you want a democracy where it's easier to get the meanings of the populace, I think it's important for us to note, and this is certainly different than. The obvious comparison to America and it's war on terror, where you've got a surge of support for the president after, um. You do not see that in Israel today, see the populace was unhappy with their government before September the immediate run up. Uh, and unhappy with it since. So while there was a rallying around the flag of that, there is still deep divisions in Israeli politics. And even more recently, since we talked about this last week, we see key members of that government criticizing the prime minister. Criticizing the actions and, and that, I think adds weight to. The need for a ceasefire and the proper conduct of the military in that zone in terms of delivering humanitarian aid. Having a post governance plan for the guidance script and adequately protecting civilian life. The other thing I want to recognize is that with American citizens, America doesn't have direct control, but a huge amount of influence over that situation and. Paul needs to be on our own government to use that influence to come out with the outcomes. But the mechanisms I think are very difficult for us to prescribe in such a quick-changing environment. Um, so connecting all of those broader international points to the issue at hand on the Maynard ceasefire resolution. Uh, one last moment I, I had was to tally up all the pros and cons, and they were about as of today, including uh the commentary we had. Didn't even split, I felt, between the people supporting and against, and that's actually, it was interesting to see that number vary over the last several weeks that they came in. However, I think it's very difficult for us to guarantee at any time if we have a very broad majority. With the only exception of some formal election at town meeting, I can't tell you how many times we've been at town meeting and I saw. Uh, citizens petition in particular, it's been quite wild in terms of what the prediction might be versus the final outcome. And certainly more practice elections, but I think that threshold is, is too hard for, for us to ever meet on, on using our board. Um, as a voice, and so while I would be prepared for a resolution, I think it would need to. To come from the board, I would want to rewrite in our own language, we did that, and I think the basis for that are the things that fall for. Um, on the side of Israel, the protection of civilian life in its mission to eradicate the ability of Hamas to commit some of the horrific acts they committed. The allowance of humanitarian aid into the territory, um, and then on the side of Hamas, the return of hostages. And the common theme between all of those, when I really thought that out, was they're all about the protection and the respect and dignity of. Of noncombatant life in a war zone and a territory there that is under great conflict, but I think if we are to. Bridge the gap between the groups of people, and as I said earlier, I think a lot of them are talking a little bit past each other. Um, where the, there's an asymmetry between what the two individual groups want me to do in this particular situation. And that is my attempt to, to put together something that really speaks to moral values in terms of. What I believe this community respects in terms of human life, um, and that's where I think if you were to come to a resolution. Those supposed to be topics would be it. So that's, that's where I'm standing today.
I would just ask that if you do something with that, that you. All board, to be part of this, like I wouldn't even have known about this on Facebook. You know, it's something as important as the resolution that you're saying from, from the town of Maynard should. You call aside people on this side, I didn't, because I'm half and half, and it's. So it's in, and completely understand, um, and it is really hard to follow, uh, you know, especially. You know, with, with no outlet other than Facebook to find things, other than the town website and things like that. Um, I would hesitate to personally, um, to publicize one item. When every, and I understand some of it seems very routine, but a lot of items we handle every day. Are important, so how do you, how do you select one to say, by the way, this one. Everybody wants to look, listen to, because this is what we're going to vote on. So we, but we do everything. So, but we do publish, we do publicize, we do publish our agenda, so we meet the set, so we meet the first and third. Tuesdays, just forgot, um, of every month, and that means the agenda is posted on that Friday before. So anything that we do is on that and all of the information is in there, so and that's why, like, that's why we don't. Have discussions outside of this, because we want to make sure it's above, we want to make sure.
This is not our agenda. This is an agenda item others asked us to put on there, and that is, and that's where it came from. We, we did not, as a, as a board, say, let's, let's, let's talk about Palestine, let's talk about a resolution. We were asked, um, uh, a number of um agendas ago through correspondence items to get involved. And I believe this is the third meeting that there's been a Palestine um item, article, information on our agenda. But this is not, this is not like we are, you know, um, town meeting articles and those type of things, those are, those are the things that we own. We, we put out there, we put on it, these are, but when people ask us to do certain things, you know, we do them, and that's it. Through the correspondence, this is where we are at, and this has been a, um, you know, a difficult conversation amongst ourselves, um, and a different, different. I know it's been difficult thoughts and opinions, you know, individually too, but this is not necessarily our. Item in this, so the, the information, as Justin said, is out there, we don't have, there are no more, um, there are no more. Uh, public newspapers in Maynard, there's no access to the information in Maynard other than through the, through the website or through people posting on Facebook. None of this stuff really is, um, exists for us to, to get that information out there. We do. Sometimes stuff through the um Action Unlimited, but other than that, our opportunity to get stuff out there is really only through the town website and through. Um, other people's postings, we post on that, you know, whatever social media the town is involved in, we post on, on those sites as well. But really, those are our only opportunities to get the information out to people, and we, you know, the. The town, town hall staff, this is as best they can with the limited information we have, limited access we have to people, but.
And I, I did want to just speak just real quick to your, to your comment regarding that, that Mike Stevens' statement was in there. That actually was a statement he made at the last select board meeting, so it wasn't that we were going to, I know that, that it looks like it's a statement. I think the last select board meeting, um, Chris asked it to be entered into the record. So, but I think that it was put here and in this level, so, but that's, that's why that looks that way.
And I did make it very clear in that, I said, that that was my opinion and not the board.
I'll, I'll note that when I read through the meeting packet in preparation, this meeting, one thing I looked like there, looked that there was no motion suggested for that particular item. It was to provide direction or take action, so there was no indication to me that the chair or anybody else was planning. A motion tonight on that topic, um, and so that's flavored my commentary in terms of if we were to do this, this is the broad language, not a specific statement. Prepared to vote on. I, if we were to do that, I think one thing we would do is look at uh some of the other towns, increase the number of towns, which is a. Who have had similar resolutions in the last several months and, and see what approaches they might have taken, um. And then one, every meeting we talk about this, more people are aware of it, we get more correspondence as well, so that doesn't work for. Uh, a lot more of the dry issues at the town phases where we can wait for as many meetings as we want, we won't attract, but on this particular issue. It, the communications, but it would grow to indicate you were moving into the direction, which seems like we're not right now. And then the last thing I just want to point out is the other popular mechanism for, for voices of support, um, from the town, the assistance petition. We, these petitioners missed the cutoff for the town meeting we had last night, so they're just off cycle to our normal. Um, two-time meeting a year cycle, so it would be, that would be a clear up and down on a particular set of language and. That can go in a lot of different directions, and there's significant pros and cons to doing something that way as well.
So.
I would just like to make one other point, uh, of a big challenge, uh, mirroring what Chris was saying, that, that the challenge of communication. Around town in the absence of the kind of media that used to exist, and it battles me that we now have so many more ways to communicate. Um, and yet somehow we seem to communicate less, um, and the communication that does take place is often tending to be. Uh, you know, more partisan in nature rather than uh discussing, so I think that's a challenge that we as a board do have. Um, is to, maybe there are some things that we can do, um, to try to promote more awareness. Uh, and involvement by people in the community on, on any issue, whether it's schools, this, water, store water. Uh, you name, that there's things that we, we need more public input from.
Thinking, uh, wrapping up the topic, I would just say, although this evening, we are not taking any action on the, um. Request for a resolution from us, does not mean that we are not going to still accept, um. Communication and communicate back and forth with people who have a, a desire to see us do something along these lines and to, to, you know. Some of the things that Jeff spoke about and some of the things that Mike spoke about as well, you know, um, we are not. You know, just at this time, we are not in a position, we don't feel to make a, make a statement that a resolution would make. But if people want to continue the dialogue and the conversation, to Mike's point, open communication and ongoing communication and education. On this topic, we are happy to be involved in that. With that, we will move on to the next item, which is the select board policies. And we will talk about business. Operation in public spaces. I don't know, you can start or I can start. Go ahead. Get the niceties out of the way first.
So, um, some context, and it's already been referenced a number of times, all accounts, um. The uh, there's a food truck, uh, that's been part, um, in certain parts of Maynard, uh, the last week or so, and. According to my observation, there is no clear policy against food truck operation on the time property, particularly in the parks. I checked the bylaws, the charter, the essential premise, the common picture license. That I just didn't see, I had infected the police chief to see if I'm going to violate the parking regulations, um, I, I inadvertently canceled. And no clear black and white policy against, um, that, that operation. Now, in the past, the town, the town, the select board has considered, um, the, in, so operations, sales. Specifically of. And the board had considered that as the use of public property. Uh, in that case, though, my record. There was an expectation there can be displaced that up, therefore going on to the site, which case you're using more than the parking space. It's, it's beyond sort of like, sort of the limitation of the public, and it's, and it's a different policy. Um, but the board had approved that, so perhaps the board may have approved this, that rest of it, and said, that's maybe here to know that. There is no clear policy to, to adhere or to apply to this particular food truck. In consideration of that, um, my advice to the select board is to take action, and I think we can do two things. You can come up with policies, you think, which I don't have on hand to recommend with the policy. Um, or you can not take action, and my, my recommendation is to vet, to allow for my office. Which is advised by the towns that really love you to buy privileged supplements. Don't have to do that, come up with policies. I would actually say there's probably a third. Which is, um. To over generalize, to do a moratorium on all, on all operations of, uh, on town, under the, under the authority of the site. A moratorium is a temporary suspension, you know, that just means until there's regulations. You, there's no more operations, whether you include trucks, lot of trucks, otherwise on time property. That, so, but barring any action, I, and again, through, through comparing with town council and the police chief. Um, I had no grounds as to. Order the cease of operations of that.
Which, which is what I'm discussing, yeah, which is, which I understand. My problem with this particular instance and all other instances is any use, since I've been here. And that's only ten years, so that's just, I'm a rookie, right? Um, any use of town property in the town of Maynard. In my time as a select board member, has come through this board for approval and permission. This food truck or any other food truck that wants to operate on town-owned land should come through this board. For permission and approval, period. That's the first thing. Second thing is, is very clear. That this food truck has quite a few of our, um, long-term, passionate. Productive, um, in very generous business owners in town, very distraught over what's going on without. You know, and, uh, you know, we only found out about this last Thursday, which is the same time you found out about it, so in that, in itself. Is problematic for the five of us, I think, that we, you know, we were unaware and so were you. That these questions were flying at us left and right, that's just can't happen, number one, but number two. Um, if you told me that someone had a food truck and they were in a parking space, I would say, yeah. We've got to figure out a way to get through this. This is three parking spaces, you've got a spot for his truck, which is a. Couple feet into the first parking space, which kind of almost four, and then his truck, then he's got a gap between that and his pickup truck. With cones all around everything, so I do know that they're his vehicle, so we're almost using up four parking spaces. In front of Maynard door and window, Ray's Bike Shop, Gigi's Restaurant, um, you know, um. Melissa Levy Imperial's Law Practice, that can't happen in a small town like Maynard. Where parking is always at such a premium and always such a concern. And I, you know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, is, as to where to tell the person to go with his food truck. Because if you move him anywhere, you're moving him closer to the restaurants, that he's the very restaurants that are here tonight to tell us. That they, you know, they've, they're feeling a pinch or they, they're sensing a, a, a slowdown in their business because of this, now whether they are or they're not, I don't know. But I'm, I'm just overly concerned with the fact that, you know, someone has just shown up and they're taking three parking spaces. In a busy intersection where there are businesses that, you know, use those parking spaces on a daily basis. And, you know, Gigi's right, at five o'clock on a, on a Tuesday night or a Friday night, which is two nights he's there, he's only there two days a week, as far as I understand, based on. His website posting, um, that's, you know, prime time, five o'clock at Gigi's is when people come, and people are uncomfortable. Because of the, I, I don't know what the noise level is, I went, I go by there and I put my window down because I read her email before I came, I didn't hear anything. So I don't know what, what that means, what, 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 what kind of, what kind of noises a grass will make, I'm sure there's actually a fan. What, what kind of milk, what kind of noises a grass groom make? I'm sure there's actually a fan. To, you know, to take the smoke out of the truck and to keep the person cool and, but, but whatever, you know. I, I just think that where that is and the way, the way it all played out, I just think it's bad. Location and a bad message to have someone taking up three parking spaces and having a negative impact. On a, a group of businesses that support everything we do in town, every social event we do, every. You know, uh, SBA event we do, every, um, you know, chamber event that comes across. Those five people that get up and talk are there. And they're there on Saturdays and they're there on Sundays. They were all there last weekend for the taste domain. Those are the people that, I didn't see the food truck contributing to the taste domain, but I saw all those people in their staffs on the, on some of their days off. You know, handing out free samples and giving food to the, the, to the Maynard schools. I, I, I just think that, that needs to be recognized. And I think that that would have been question number one from this group, Mr. Gavin in particular. Would have asked the question, right? And the question would have been, have you consulted with the local businesses where you intend to operate? To find out what their considerations are and what their opinions are of what's about to take place. And the fact that this group. Didn't have an opportunity to ask those questions, leaves me with a lot of. A lot of, um, you know, questions about what happened and why it didn't happen the way it's supposed to happen. And there is nobody in this building. Employed by this community, they can sit in either of those two chairs and honestly tell me that they didn't think that the select board should have approved that, that, that. Permit for that company to do business in our town owned property.
I'm actually concerned that it's, that they're still doing this because on town property. When I, and, and I guess it's because we, well, we haven't met yet, so tonight, but. Um, I, I think there were clearly some questions raised over the weekend or last week and. You know, clearly there were some. There were some, um, conflicting opinions as to how it should have happened. But the fact that we hadn't gotten a chance to weigh in on it, and now they're still advertising that they're here all week. And so how? But they haven't come before, no one's come before us, no one's asking permission and even after we've said that that's what should happen.
I don't, wait, wait, I don't, I don't want to, I, I don't need to interrupt you.
No, you know.
But, but I, I will say this in, in defense of that thought, it's something should have happened. Town council recommended that we not take that action. Because we had a man as a board and we haven't, we don't have a policy to, to put, to stand back on and say. This policy is in, you're in violation of this policy or that policy. Town council said failing this discussion tonight and whatever action we may or may not decide to take tonight, town council said. Slow, slow the roll, right? I mean.
That's correct. I have some policy. So, to be clear, we've granted them a food permit, so that it allows them to serve the food, but. Um, but we haven't granted them any use of town property permit, right? So I. Um, is there anything restricting, say, the lobster truck that normally, or the, let's say, the lobster truck that goes to Ericsson's? Or the uh coffee truck that goes to the farmer's market, both assuming have permission from the, the private property owner of the lobster using? Is there anything that would stop them from with their permits, parking spot, just as the taco truck has?
No.
Right. So there's, the reason it hasn't come to us is that we just don't have policy in place to stop it.
We haven't. All right. So I guess this is the first truck that's decided to try it then, because. The flower truck, well, the flower truck asks permission, and then we also have all of the restaurants. That now do extended dining, outside dining, and that.
That's a permanent structure, that's a different, and it's an extension of their premise.
But it's taking, but it's taking up parking spaces. And I believe in the beginning of that, that the parking authority was, was, was consulted. You know, there was a lot of work that needed to be done in order to do that. So. It, yeah, I'm just, I, I'm actually, I'm, I'm quite floored that this just kind of appeared, Jan.
My, my, my concern, if you want to call it that, is more, and I've been consistent with this for the sixteen years that I was talking. This, this process. And consistent process. And. We have, Greg will recognize that last Thursday, wasn't it, when, oh, it might have been Wednesday, because I think I was in my office, so I don't know. Wednesday, it was Thursday. Um, when I first became aware of the fact that there was a truck and I saw. By accident, saw a photograph on some social media. But I didn't know where it was. I, actually, I heard, I, I didn't see a photograph. I heard or I saw a comment about it being this, this. Wonderful thing. People were very positive about it. It was good, it was good news, wonderful thing about a truck, um. Being at the corner of Sudbury and May. So, not knowing anything, Greg and I were communicating on a totally different topic. And I put an add addendum to my email that said, oh, by the way, I've heard about a truck. I assume that's on private property. Because my assumption as being a member of this board for sixteen years, that if it's on public property, I certainly would know about. And I had no clue. Um, so that begs the question, and okay, so what do we do? At this, it's there, we can, we can, tonight, presumably, we can declare a moratorium. But I don't want to do that because we already have a successful private location for, I don't want to ruin Ericsson's. Game.
Oh, no.
You know, by putting a moratorium on.
No, you would be putting a moratorium on.
On public.
Public property.
Yeah.
So if we put a moratorium on public property, fine, as long as it's not on.
Very specific.
As long as it's not on, um, on the private property. But I also don't want to then. Inflict unwillingly a concern for two events that are coming up in. Just a few weeks, right? Where they're having food trucks.
That's true, but as long as it's within the, um, that patient set. So like the beer, like the beer.
So that's already been approved.
If it's, yeah, so similar to the essential. From this other restaurant to allow them to extend it on to.
And even on those topics, we had a discussion about having. You know, we approved the use of public property for those events. And with knowledge, especially with the beer tent, that was going to be there. And I think we had a discussion on food trucks that were going to be at, at those events. So what I would suggest then, just throw this out. Um, is that we put a moratorium on food trucks on public property. Until such time as we have a.
Regulation.
Regulations. And I don't want to have it come across as Maynard being unfriendly to business. Because here's a small bit coming in, when, no, as Chris addressed. First of all, I'm concerned about is this truck and I'm, I'm not casting aspersions on him. I don't know the individuals involved. But are they, are they paying our, our town meals tax? I don't know. Who's reporting? Because it's prepared food, it should be just like Market Basket has to pay, uh, our food tax, so does Gigi's. And so does the family dealt.
Sure.
So, so should these. Um, we just need to be consistent, consistency, that is, uh. That is my concern, and I don't think there's any consistency here and was out of the ordinary. And from my perspective, I've always made it clear, and if anything is, and I understand you may not even know about it when I email.
No, rude.
But. It, it's consistency that is my concern and that anything out of the ordinary in the board should be made aware of. We had no clue. And we start getting angry calls or positive calls, and I know nothing about. And as a member of the board, I think I should.
I also would like, um, I, I don't necessarily think the, the economic development committee, um. Should be the committee that puts it together. I actually think that it's town staff that should put that together because it's a town policy. Um.
It would be nice to have the parking authority, they were operating well when we were operating.
But I, I, again, it's a, it's a town policy, it should come from town stall. No, I mean, you could move it right by the network, but.
Well, I certainly. Certainly sure that Lisa Needham team have. Drawing up such policies.
All right, well, okay, so we're all in alignment, we need some policy to cover this information.
Yep, yep.
So I, what I would expect, whatever iteration, first of all, look at what other communities do that are, are giving the situation, um. I want to double and triple check the, the legality of the parking situation, like there's, you know, parking profitable spots, right? If I just have my car and I park across well spots, let's say I rent along the moment, parking across multiple spots, and I really just park in three spots and. In that stretch if I wanted to, that, that.
Well, that's fair, all three questions. That's why I check.
And say they weren't independent of anything else, they weren't violating any parking rules. Not that I, not that they're aware. Okay, that's, that's a good check right there, um. Then at, at some point you have to consider, we want to have a max duration in parking across town. There is other enforceability, as I know, talked about. Is there a limit on you can occupy more than one spot with a vehicle or something like that?
Or somebody out.
And well, that's what I'm saying, that was the first thing I said, there's a max duration, um, and all these approaching ponds and all these. We need to kind of balance, especially if you're going to put a moratorium as a temporary solution, speed versus. Thoroughness of, of revaluation of these. So I, you know, want to make sure you look at frozen times and look at other communities, um. What hours are appropriate for a taco operator and truck, um, you know, at four in the morning, not in some, for some of the normal hours. And then the, the real kind of element that came to me as I listened to businesses speak about what's particularly different there is that. Food truck is a temporary installation, they haven't put in the, the, the duration of the investment into the community. Of at least, I assume most of these businesses is annual lease, right? So if you have a business in there, you can assume they're going to be around for on the scale of the year. If not much more based on our community, you know, members. And we just don't have that scheme with the truck. And so it starts to raise the questions of, you turn an annual fee or something to allow this use and that balances some of the, you know, still allowing. What other communities have enjoyed and where their community enjoys in taco truck, but. Levels the playing field, um, for, you know, the individuals who are running a business out of a brick or mortar establishment and. Possibly that. What does a fair key structure look like? I don't know, but it's something that needs to be considered as part of this policy. That's, those are, those are kind of my baseline thoughts on starting a policy. I don't want to be rash in putting this in place, but I also. I don't want it to take forever and have some moratorium that's, you know, uses the department, that should be truly a temporary thing that we. See if that's, if moratorium and it looks like will be worked right now. Mike, so let me, let me ask about the moratorium. So right now, before we make any decision on that, there's no, no ability for us to remove that. Uh, a truck that has properly, um, gone through the health application to get the license reserving safety.
That's my understanding. I checked with council on police, I have, I have no grounds to.
Okay, so I take our action and I. What you can do, I understood. Thank you, Ken.
Yeah.
Any comments, Mike?
Um, you've been quiet. No additional comments, and I concur with, uh, the concerns that have been raised and, and I think we need some very thoughtful. Uh, approaches to, to how we make sure that this doesn't happen again. Because I, I think the concerns that were raised by the, the business owners before are very real and legitimate. Uh, I think we need to, to take care of their concerns, um, as soon as we can. Especially as we were entering the, what I can only presume is a busier season.
Yeah, good.
I will make a motion.
So let's, let's talk about the language of moratorium before we make a motion.
Yeah. Yes, I'm.
He was waiting.
Yeah, if I may, uh, just, in my opinion, I would. You're going to impose a moratorium on the, narrowly tailoring it, cause from observations. Food truck is popular, uh, I mean, you're in the unenviable position getting slammed by both sides. There should be a policy in place. Perhaps the moratorium should just be on use of public parking in the downtown overlay district. Because that's the most vulnerable, uh, and in other towns, they do have exclusions based on district. Hudson does it, um, Crafton does it, et cetera. So. In terms of not being rash, also not appearing completely business unfriendly, I think will be a collateral, you know, damage from this. There is a moratorium, um, maybe. Keep the moratorium limited to a specific area and it's the most vulnerable, um.
But then that would mean that they could operate in the residential district? So like you could go in a neighborhood?
Yeah, but from a business standpoint, it doesn't make sense. I can, I can appreciate, um, don't want to ban ice cream.
I can appreciate this point, but I, but, and that's fair, yeah, it's, but I agree, consistency and sort of straightforwardness. So, then you can take a look, we will expedite the development of the policy to get as soon as possible. I can't guarantee we'll be ready by. Which is the next schedule selection. But that, that I understand is, and we talked about this, that like, it will be one of our hearts parked and. But I appreciate that, he didn't give me, but I, I would say, this is not very clear to your point, outside of the, the town time, where would it go? I would say just do a moratorium, just get on some side, just clear it up. And then, because what if they park somewhere new? We said that downtown, there is parking spaces.
Good question, this is a serious question, um. Tended to be. Was an ice cream truck that runs around town with music playing, have any type of?
Yes, so ice cream trucks actually have state records, so it has something to do with, uh, the fact that they're selling.
Yeah. Uh, so we're not in any way violating, tomorrow's going to be ninety degrees or whatever, and if an ice cream truck comes to begin there, we're not.
No, actually, yeah, you are. So when I, I. The state, if you, so I didn't mean to assume, but I, my, my assumption was to, or moratorium would be on, on operating a business. On town property. So, which, which includes the streets. So the business could be food truck, or flower truck.
No, if they want to.
I'd know, I would say, first of all, I don't want to limit the downtown dining for, we have by just saying no business on.
No, you, that's fair, but you borrow a grant for this, because, so maybe you say, um, a mobile business. I don't, this is not easy.
I understand it's not easy, and that's why I want to take care of the language.
Yeah, yes.
So I would say maybe a whole business, um, the truck itself.
To, to Steve's point, if we put it in the downtown overlay district, you're not going to be worried about the ice cream truck, because they typically run downtown. They're enabled. If you limit it to the downtown overlay district, you're not talking about locations that an ice cream truck typically travels, at least that I know. I don't know, um, Juneup Hills goes up and down the street here or not, I don't know, but, um, you know. I don't think any ice cream trucks travel up and down Main Street and Mason in, in summer, but, you know. I'm okay with that, that thought to put it in the.
But then how do we control if it parks somewhere we don't want?
Well, I mean, you know, where's their park?
They could, they could park right, they could park right beyond town hall. Uh, a hundred feet from where they currently are, and they've got the same business.
I, I would think that a conversation with the person would, you know, resolve the issue. So we have to resolve this issue, it's not your issue, we're not trying to hurt you. We need to resolve this issue, give us sixty days, and when we'll, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll find a spot, we'll, we'll figure out a resolution. And part of that resolution is, you know, you, you can't just say no to the person, and we're not saying no.
Right.
But we're saying no in, in front of Jesus, in front of these other places and, and other people who came in and spoke to us. I, I don't know where they.
But I carry businesses.
Yeah, but, so I. Is that?
So where are we?
Um, moratorium in the overlay district?
I'll, I'll, I'll compromise on that.
Greg, we're leaning towards a moratorium in the overlay district, you were just suggesting town wide. Well, no, no, I, I'm mindful of your opinion. Only to make, uh, because I, you know, as Justin pointed out, it, like, I, I can't, I should then slip my eyes to the other part of the town. I just don't even remember where the batteries are, I don't have any, like, it, I can see, where's?
But I think, I think it ends with rust.
Where, I think it's going to make.
So in essence, you're, you're, you know, if you're requiring them to be outside.
No, they can't park them more than ten minutes.
That's right.
I must have a better.
They could park there. You know, that's all I'm saying, it's like, I think, I just don't want, I don't want to be in confusion and, and. Now a lot of people know where the town is, I think it's, I think it's a good suggestion. But if you don't want to see food truck on anywhere, you don't want to see it.
Well, if we're going to, if we're going to hold to a, if we're going to hold to a specific length of time to get this resolved, I, I think. The townwide thing for a. The townwide thing for a, well, that is okay.
But I don't, honestly, I, I don't want to, I, and I get it, because. But I don't want to ban ice cream trucks that have been operating in our town for twenty years.
Probably exclude ice cream trucks.
Okay.
You can.
Yes, okay. Yeah, then I, then I'm okay with that. That's, that's a better problem.
As long as he gets born, he's good.
No, I'm not looking for like, I haven't run after an ice cream truck since.
Any other that's been troubling you, that were accidentally gotten serious. I don't want to accidentally ban anything else.
Consequences of the.
And that's what we're, that's what we're talking about anyways. I don't intend any consequences.
I, that's very good, but we didn't know we needed a food truck policy. I think it's okay to trust and then, and then we find out that was that. And it still have a policy. But moratorium everywhere for.
So more.
Yeah, what's the?
On, on town property without prior permission. Correct? We've already done that. Excluding ice cream trucks.
But it.
More for this, this is a business operation. I just, cause I think that's a mobile business.
On a.
Yeah. Do you think that it, it is not? Moving the topic, would they be considered a mobile business? Yeah, they're a mobile food establishment.
I mean, about like, um, mosquito squad, duty calls, all those stuff. Restricted to food?
Okay, I'm okay with that. I mean.
Yeah. You have to get them.
That was good.
Not without permission.
Because we already have policy.
The, the triangle.
Like.
It's talented. It's, it's.
I think parking, parking spaces are a unique case here. Land and roadside parking are unique here that. Certainly if somebody were to park in the middle of. And I'm sure we should have the authority to remove them, but for a common use parking spot and generally in the square or any common parking area. Would be entered in different, different regulation. Or no regulation.
So.
I like the idea of the mobile food establishment. I guess we, I, I said right now, I don't. I would say that, um, try not to get too much of the graders. If there's, if there, um. The mayor doors, they have the Anderson truck parks out front on regular business. They take up the main spaces. Technically, they are operating a business through the, that Anderson, the Anderson's operating.
Isn't he taking a delivery to me?
Fair enough. I'm just trying to get away from the grader. So more to say like, oh, I can leave our there.
But everybody along Main Street gets deliveries.
I, I'm, I'm trying to, but that's. Yeah, I think, I think it's knee jerk. I think you're going to get slammed.
That's fine.
Well, the knee jerk, because we didn't know about.
Yeah.
If it, if it was done, if this was, if this was done right, it would never have been a problem. And wasn't done right, it's problem. So now we, we're getting slammed anyway, so we might as well fix the problem.
I agree against. You and I are trying to watch out for the tap. Trying to make sure that we do it right. I agree that's important. So, so right now I have as, um. Prohibition on use of town property to operate a more food truck, sweetened ice trucks.
Uh. Without prior permission.
Oh, prior permission. Thank you. I wrote that. I didn't say that. But what did you say without?
Without prior permission. Because we have, we have the trucks that are, that are permitted, that are going to be doing the festivals.
Okay.
No, I'm not worried about it. Obviously you see it up here, not worried about getting criticized decisions. But.
Yeah.
You know, to correct the problem is the right decision, whether anybody likes it or not. I agree. So bring it on.
Well, it's, as long as we are consistent with what we're doing, there's no need to explain to anybody because the rule is. That, that, or that business should have come to us first in order to get approval. They didn't.
There's no restriction on them.
So let's, let's, let's get to the motion. Is there a motion? Did you write a motion?
I've heard. No, right here, you know, give me the points again. Mobile food truck, I'm sorry, mobile food establishment. Here's my recommendation. Yeah. Uh, moves to prohibit it. The operation of a mobile food establishment on town property. Sweet lessons that. Down part.
So moved.
A second.
Is.
All right, I will. Actually, I think you can do that.
Yes.
You, you're, you're going to do it on there.
Is this, is this going to require, um, town council to review it? I mean, I, I'm just taking a point, you that if, if we have a doubt, if I, I'll speak myself and have the expertise.
It's about the prohibition?
Yeah.
Actually, I already, I tested.
Oh, yeah.
You can do it, but she highly encourages actually getting regulations.
Yeah, no. Yeah, so she's going to do it and she's going to draw the regulations.
Right. Yeah, okay, yeah.
So that's fine. Um, so now we've had plenty of discussion about this. Would anybody like the friendly discussion we can vote on the moratorium on. Mobile food establishments.
I think to address, uh, Steve's point, uh, I wonder if there's some kind of a, a statement that we can make. That will help people to understand why.
That's the statement. That's. And that's the statement that we, you know, we, and if the statement is we're going to develop a policy to resolve the issue that. You know, this has created within the community.
Can we add effective immediately?
It's only effective, it's only effective when we raise our hands and vote yes or no.
No, but I mean.
So they're, they're scheduled to be downtown meter this week.
Right. We will hear today.
Um, like downtown, downtown, but are they going to be there or are they going to be in the back parking? Cause they're going to get reached to, is what I saw. And it was like fifty-two A Main Street.
But that's, if they're on Amrum two property.
Right, they're in the parking lot. But are they scheduled to be in parking lot? They're scheduled to be out front in the parking spaces.
I don't know. Then because they don't have to tell us, they will have to figure that out. We're putting a moratorium on, on public space.
Yeah, effective a meeting.
Effective reason. Um, I'll, I'll note, we could have allowed them to continue to operate while we put tools in place. So that's our choice. To me, I, I think. In doubt between the two weighing in on the side of the long established town businesses is the right thing to do for the temporary portion of this. Be, figure out what the best policy is for the law.
And as an aside, I'd like to also learn how these businesses. Uh, effectively calculate and report the meals tax they are paying that.
Okay. They, they, they have to, they, they do monthly submissions to D O R. So they say when they're in X town. And they pay the exercise tax if they're possible. So.
I'm sure that they're doing, that they're, that they're doing that.
Right. I said, I think, I think the, um, potential license for relations, whatever, it's going to look like. Can note that they do have to be in compliance with all state regulations between the heart of that.
Okay.
Just to be clear, in this case, as far as I understand, they're fully compliant with all state local laws and regulations. Right.
Yep.
They've done nothing wrong.
No, they've been doing anything wrong. They have not done anything wrong, to be honest.
Two second.
Just me. Um, okay, all those in favor of this temporary moratorium, will we straighten up the regulations? All right.
Wow.
Uh, summer, summer twenty twenty-four schedule, um, we were thinking of moving the meeting to July night. Um, that has, that potentially, um, conflict or shift. So if, um. So if, um. I don't, doesn't matter to me either way. I was okay with the ninth. I'm okay with the second. Does anybody have a problem with the seconds?
I, I will be on vacation myself, actually. So I don't want to follow the exact words of my contract.
I'll be out of the country.
Sense from the board or sort of acknowledging the board that I may not be able to make it.
Yeah. Yeah, the country, I'll be in need. On the second. I'll zoom, so maybe in a second.
I might be able to make it on.
Oh, you won't be here. She's not. She will be here by one. But all right, all right. So I mean, that's fine. We can do the second by Zoom. That was just a, a suggestion based on vacation, but we can get, um, Stephanie to cover. So we can, we can figure out how we get the rest of the chapter. We'll not be here for the ninth or the sixteenth, and we have, um, we'll have. I like to, I like to suggest, because there is, there is a vacation, that the agenda remain very, very light. All the most, um, necessary of things, which is the reorganization of the board and a couple of procedural things. And that's it for that agenda. Get everybody on the phone, get it done and get out on the second, on the second. So, so the schedule remain unchanged. Thank you. So second, sixteenth, which you won't be here for, but we'll reorganize the board on the seconds and then we'll go to the sixteenth and. You know, whatever, whatever is done is done for the sixteenth, but that's, is everyone okay with that? Yes. So there are no changes. See everybody July seventh, except for you.
I'm on vacation. I'm on vacation too that week, but I would like to.
Let's, yeah, we can zoom.
Zoom or be.
Okay.
I'll make the range.
Um. The second is what, a Tuesday?
Tuesday, yes.
Would it be?
The night we made fresh.
No, 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 but I know that. I know that. I'm just thinking a lot. Is it, it's, would anybody, would anybody, I mean, to get it out of the way, get it off the schedule? Would anybody want to do it the first? Just do July first and get it done. So let me have the second, third, fourth, you know, leading into the holiday type of thing. So that's up to, that's up to everybody, but it's, you know. Maybe I need just some of the, some of the regulations.
I would rather first, because, um, my wife just kept on saying, I think the, one second, but, um. And, and Stephanie had a vague plans well ahead, so, um. I think the first.
There's the first.
Honestly, that's the first step.
I mean, is that, is that okay? Get it the first night, the July first to head out of the way. Everybody has the rest of the week to not worry about it.
He's good.
All right. So, so just, just, um, Greg, Greg, can you guys just make sure we are, we're adequately reminded? Cause we get older, we forget.
Okay.
So we'll be July first. If that, that's great. We'll do the reorganization on July first. And then we will see each other again on the sixteenth.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. All that, all that back and forth, Greg, for love.
Yeah, we'll sorry, uh, notify Lindsay.
Yeah, actually officially.
Yeah.
She was on.
Yeah, um, so, uh, the budget joint planning meeting, June eleventh, which you will be at, just in. Um, um, the last one of those you're going to have to go to, um, by choice, not by choice. I'm o- I'm okay with what, what's suggested. I, I, I kind of, you know, um, the time, the time, what is the place going to be?
I, so I, well, actually I would like the board's direction on that during the budget subcommittee, it was, um. It's in the fire station. Is that correct? I don't, I guess fire station hybrid encouraging person attendance, recommending that many people.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine with me too. And I think, I think that, um, the chair of the, the FinCon weighed in on the same thing. So that's fine. Um, I, you know, what, what? So I see all this information of what potential topics could be and everything else. I. What's the agenda? There's open discussion and I, I think maybe a couple, you know, potential topics. Um, operational planning and capital planning, those two. But then once, once the, um, we open the floor to a general discussion, I think it becomes, for lack of a better term, a little bit of a. A free for all with everybody with different opinions and different thoughts and, and other things. I don't, like, I'm looking at. Some of the individual topics, health insurance, road sidewalk, capital expenses, stormwater, the deputy fire position again, senior center leasing. Salaries, all that stuff. I mean, I don't, uh, that, I don't know that any of that stuff is going to be ready to be presented. And is it, is it appropriate to present it to all three or four groups at, four groups at once? Or those just items that, uh, we know that are out there?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Or as far as, I think, I thought. And I thought, you know, the, um, the last at the bottom, the debt exclusion considerations. So one and two at the top and the debt exclusion considerations. I thought those were the, the three, the three main items and all the stuff in, in the, in the middle. I get, but. Those are the other, those are the real, um. Me to the, the problem. I think, to be perfectly honest, I think there's, um, any number of people coming from different, um, branches of our. Local government that all they want to talk about is the debt exclusion. So.
Yes.
Which, which we thought, debt exclusion is coming presumably, uh, in the fall, school with the bleachers. Then override is going to be at the top because we need additional money in order to run the operation down. Um, I know.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, and that's where the conversation is going to go.
So at the.
No, no, go.
Go.
No, the budget subcommittee, uh, meeting, capital planning, um, I clearly indicated the, the. Both the desire and the understanding that this was mainly primarily or perhaps even exclusively meant to be about, um, capital. Or at least a focal point of that meeting. Um, and I believe they said they prepared a presentation that was fifteen, twenty minutes, Greg?
Yeah.
Uh, which, which was. But what they're, they were hoping to present that, I think, and have a conversation about capital. Solely, school committee would like to talk about an operational override for next year, um, not, not unexpected there. Um. And what I would like to do is present on the peer community analysis that I presented to the budget subcommittee meeting back in February. Certainly touches on both operational, uh, and debt exclusions, um, and kind of the status of the town when we look at benchmark community. Uh, school committee was very much against that.
Is that focused on school issues?
So it, it has both town side and school side. It does have a bit more on schools. Because there's more publicly available data on schools and schools to represent two thirds of budgets.
I don't know what the direction of your presentation might be, but given the schools are the one that are looking for an operational override, probably best focus on.
I, so I can like just give that presentation or depending on the direction this quarter, what's that? I think I've given it around fifteen minutes. Stephanie, Greg, you both seem to give that presentation.
Um, maybe you first.
Fine, Greg. Thank you very much.
Just don't tell me. Just in time.
I, I will not be.
I can be pointed in the books.
I can, I can, I can wait and focus. Let's say it takes half an hour and I can cut it down if we decide to do that.
Yeah, I think that, I think that makes sense. And, um.
And no questions during the presentations to, for that.
So let me interrupt for one second. Being that. You're a part of the budget subcommittee, obviously. Jeff is a part of it. Why don't you guys create the agenda for this? As opposed to, as opposed to those of us who don't, you guys, you guys are dealing with it.
Bring an air full button.
The full button.
We're in disagreement, but.
Right. Well, well, at, at the end of the, at the end of the day, it's our meeting. It's, it like, we, we, we are the body that's going to, um.
Right.
You know, we're inviting others to attend the meeting. We're going to, we're going to. We're going to bring our gavel and control the meeting as far as the discussion we had, and that was okay with.
And that was how others are approaching the budget subcommittee. And then there was some back and forth.
Well, so, so making a gender and, and if these topics that, you know, we don't, we as the, this board. We don't feel should be, they will, will adjust accordingly.
Here, here's.
But I don't want to, like, I don't want to heavy hand them, but.
My three cents is going to be that very rarely does anybody here from the select. I speak. So in any occasion, typically, so the town administrator speaks, like for the budget, for the budget meeting. And then capital planning speaks, and then the schools speak. But our voice never really seems to get heard. So I do think it's important for you to present the, the comparative communities. And maybe a little bit of something that was in this letter board message to town meeting voters. Just so that can be part of the conversation, because I think absent that. We're not part of the conversation. That makes sense.
It, well, I think, I think it's for nobody's fault or anything else. Because every time, every time we have one of those meetings. It gets hijacked by a general discussion and then we're usually the last to weigh in and we.
Right.
Oftentimes don't get to weigh in because the clock sends us home, but yeah. So we chose. Me, yeah. Is it going to be a, um, a, another thing which I think we should consider is a, a, a drop in time? We're going to start at this time. We're going to end at that time and what we get done in that amount of time. And that's what the meeting is.
I, I always encourage that, but you have to be clear about that when you start the meeting.
Well, I, I will, but I think that that should be on the agenda as well. When there's that second agenda, I'll, I'll, I'll do the general view, but I just thought. Look, these guys have had conversations about what they'd like to have this conversation be. I don't necessarily have, we said opinions on what I'd like it to be. I know what I'd like it not to be. I'd like it not to be a free for all with, you know, um, people that go to one meeting a year, standing up and telling us what we're doing wrong. Uh, you know, I, I don't think it needs to be a, uh, meeting that includes public comments, to be perfectly honest. It's a meeting among four, four boards and, um, if there's public comment to be made, the public comment could be made. At the next meeting of the school committee or the FinCon or the select board or the capital planning committee. I don't think this, this particular meeting is a place for public comments. I don't think this, this particular meeting is a place for public comments.
Could you get your presentation, if it's here, here, I, I've been sitting in on other meetings lately. And especially when there's a lot of topics that need to get done. They do put a pretty strict timeline on it, so would it be something, could you do something in fifteen, like if capital planning can do fifteen minutes? And you can do fifteen minutes, and schools can do fifteen minutes, that at least.
I, I can, I can.
It would hold.
Cut anytime you want.
Us accountable for at least.
So what, so, so we have four groups. We have us, we have the FinCon, we have the, the school committee, and the capital planning committee. At your suggestion, take your suggestion, make that part of the agenda, and say at the beginning of the meeting, each board. So whichever representative you want, you have fifteen minutes to make a presentation of your choosing. And go from there.
I'm okay with that. Um. I might give a little extra capital, first time we invited into jointed, that was the original thing throughout that, and they did say, I think, up to twenty minutes, so I might. Might advocate to give them just a bit more.
I will leave all the time. I will leave my egg timer at home.
Alright. I think that, I think that's clever, and I, um, both, if you're trying to establish balance amongst the board, the board boards. Uh, and I guess that could be, I can think about some of the timing things, and, cause you're not just talking about the presentation. You, I, you're also trying to include certain questions back and forth.
Well.
If you don't just go capital, then, alright, you're done talking, it's been told, it's fine, so you can do anything, and then I presume that there is.
But, but I think, I think, but I think that if we take the, the suggestion. And, and do it that way, right, I think when we get to um, the point in the meeting where the last of the four. Um, groups has made their presentation, I think that that will give us, as we move into the conversation and discussion phase. I think through those four presentations, I don't think there's many of the items. Including capital planning, operating, operational budget planning, debt exclusion considerations, override considerations. The green mail school, the bleachers, and the DPW yard and garage, I don't think there's any of those topics that will not have been touched on.
Yeah.
And leading into the conversation, which maybe the conversation forms a little, a little more naturally. After each group has kind of had their say, rather than trying to get your say in.
Yeah.
During an open conversation, which is what we typically have.
Is the purpose of this meeting clearly delineated?
Originally it was, so just as a little context, um, but my understanding. At the, at the joint weather review, it's a town charter dictating events, we had it in there. There was uh census amongst the bodies, there wasn't quite enough time given to particularly capital. So the idea was, okay, capital planning committee, come back to us at a time after town meeting. That you can kind of wait before the July, and so since then, capital planning committee has stayed that task, they developed a different plan in the slot, and they're ready to go. And then, then. I was trying to get feedback from the charity, but what we had to talk about, and there was some uh request for consideration of beyond capital, getting to. Specifically as David kind of moved to central events, and then it kind of evolved. So I originally, it was more or less continuance of the joint, the joint by group, particularly to give time to capital. Especially considering bleachers, water sealer and stuff. Will be.
Yeah, just a bit, yeah, to, to avoid the kind of situation, Chris, that you're worried about, the, you know, things. Devolving into a bit of a free flow, I think that's just gonna take some very careful focus. And, oh, that's not always easy to do.
If I were to put it into one sentence, I would say there's multiple fiscal requests and demands on the town. And we need to find a way to prioritize and evaluate and stage them.
Yeah, good, yeah, just a way of keeping people on task. Uh, it's.
It's in the limited time that we have.
So, so I. That's just become, that's become, just over the history of having these meetings for the last several years, one or two a year. It's, it's been difficult to keep all of us. On that focus road. Because there's, there are so many, there's so many different groups, and so many different wants, and so many different areas of, of conversation that come up. That we sometimes don't stay on, on, on path, but maybe we, we try this way where we actually. Request a presentation from each group, cause we've never done that, different people have put stuff on the screen and everything else, but if we request. A presentation. You know, and I guess. Between now and, I don't know, the next week or whatever, next time we meet, I think the conversation has to be kind of uh. Well, will be the week before, what, what should those presentations, what do we expect out of those presentations?
So, I don't know that the FinCon was necessarily preparing a presentation, so they, that. And I can just, they may or may not decide to, I'm not even convinced the school committee was preparing a presentation, they simply wanted to discuss the whole correct. I will note that one request of the school committee was um, I believe, from the FinCon and from myself, was to be more quantitative over what. An override would look like, and sort of, put some specific numbers. Certainly, one, one ask that came up.
So we're looking for um. We're looking for each group to provide. You know, their um. Their version, or their, their requests or, or wants. For the long term capital planning in the town, is it, as it relates to their. As, as it relates to their, their long term planning discussions, their, their own. And, and FinCon has to have that, they just, you know, I mean, all the work that um, bought the fats and all that. Yes, you did.
Just need two people on.
We can find it online.
They don't, they don't, so I, I love the, the conversation, here's what I'm gathering, in the past, when joint brother review agenda, we have said as simply as. Perspective of select, perspective of. Physical conditions and playing, perspective of capital, capital. Respect, actually, I need, I'd like some direction from y'all, what order would you like the capital planning committee first? Then who? Slower, school committee, then private office committee.
No, I would, I would think that we would go last.
You go last.
We'll go last. We'll open the meeting. You know, we'll open a meeting with a statement about what, what the expectation is, I'm. You know, um, all that, and then. Request, request a presentation on, you know, the law, the long, what is, what is your long term thinking, what is your long range? Thoughts and wants.
I think I, I think I got it.
Okay. Okay, and share it with the um, share it also with the um budget subcommittees. Cause their input is, you know. Specific to it.
I don't believe it was any of these for the. Oh, I, I got you.
Yeah, okay. Well, time is, sorry, this ought to be a great one. Oh, go ahead.
I appreciate everyone's uh support and all the. Kind of moderates and, and the votes, so, um, it would be great, and successfully having energy. Um, I had the privilege of sitting in on the high school seniors, uh, final project presentations, always getting. And more the year about the. Cassidy purge, you know, so impressive. Well, we saw Steve. Great, be there, um, Memorial Day is on Monday, I'm very much looking forward to it, and um. Stephanie and I will be at the municipal municipal. And then the, uh, oh, the police have started their annual, sorry, end of July, and it's a nice, hot. Uh, time for the new compared. That's all I have, just very much.
And no, that's no questions for me. See what the rules sucks, um. Parade, yeah, the parade, and I will not be there for the parade next Monday, I don't think, and um, Mr. Gavin is gonna speak on our behalf. As he typically does in Memorial Day, and I would say it's a fantastic job, so thank you for that, David. And I don't have anything, as, as far as that, I was gonna talk about, whatever I was gonna talk about, we spoke about in the meeting. Um, so now we're at the board member reports, Mike.
Uh, just to follow on from what uh Greg said about the, the high school senior project day, I would have the opportunity to join them. Um, and in particular, we saw two presentations about. Uh, response to mental health care for people going through COVID. Students going through COVID, and, and that was both fascinating, I mean, having been a teacher myself for thirty years. Um, it was just heartwarming to see another generation of kids addressing topics with serious sense of intelligence. And uh appreciation for that, recognizing that these, this is our future. Shoes, so thank you to them.
Alright, David.
Yeah, just congratulations to the M E F on their, uh, event from Sunday. You know, I'd love for it to be the insight again. Just.
I, 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 I hadn't felt that way before, Sunday, and after Sunday, I, I thought, boy, it was, it was a much. Easier. Event to enjoy and participate in when it was in one spot.
Yeah, it was much more social.
But I, but I.
Rather than just walking around.
Like, I think part of the problem, and it's a good problem to have, I think they've outgrown the else. And I think that's the problem, they've outgrown that space, so I don't know where else it would be, but. Yes, it's, it's, it's kind of tough to have conversations with people and. And other things, when you're walking up and down Main Street, and, and by the way, the street isn't closed, so there's, you know, you get kids in traffic, and. It just, it just, it was fun, and it was fine, but it just, it just seemed to be a little more, um, a little bigger. A little, little more difficult to maneuver than it was in the past, and maybe we'll, maybe that's something they'll, they'll pick up on and address, but yeah.
Yeah, so congratulations to them, it was a nice event and fun. Um, the garden club had their annual sale on Saturday, which um. It's really amazing how much they put together and how much, you know, it's like, it's like going to a place and. To get shot for plants, uh, really good, um, another social event, well attended when I was there, although the rain started. Shortly after, I probably brought it. Um, and uh, so, but anyway, good to see community events going on that people participating in, and uh. I, I hope the town turns out as it always does on Memorial.
Alright, Christine. Thank you.
Jeff, uh, I think I covered all the budget subcommittee in the previous discussion, I also had a chance to enter the taste of motion. Um, just kind of reflecting on that, another event that, like Matt said, inside was the Jazz Festival last year due to rain, I think there, there's a pro and con. But there's just, when people are in the room, there's an energy that's not there when people are spread out, but then you don't showcase the downtown as much either, so I think there's a. There's pros and cons to both, but um, regardless, I enjoyed the taste of motion, it was good to see everybody there, and by the, the rain held out, and that takes a lot of.
Yeah. Right, um, a- as Jerry Culver likes to say, I'll entertain a motion.
My turn.
Second.
All in favor, see you guys on um, New.